Great, would you be in the budget?
National agents.
United States of America.
And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God. Indisultable with liberty and justice for all.
All right. So here we are in the middle of October. And see, we have our twenty-four, twenty-five budget development calendar on the agenda. So it reminds us that that's uh that's coming up. Okay, are there any changes to the agenda that anyone is needs to request?
I I think I need to take the minutes out from October second.
The October second minutes. Now that was the meeting in Ridge, right? The meeting we had right after the district meeting.
You mean to take the September eighteenth ones out? Oh, it's eighteen. I was wait. Maybe they're both something I wasn't.
I think you were here for the second.
We had attendance on the second.
Oh, so then it was the sixteenth, eighteenth, I mean, okay, eighteen, thank you.
So the non-public for the eighteenth.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, all right. So those will be removed from the consent agenda. And then if those are the only changes to the agenda, then we would be ready to move on to public comments.
All right, um, so.
Sorry, Juneau, could I ask a favor?
Of course.
Tell us who or how many people are online.
Currently, we have four people online.
Okay. So good.
Um, so if you'd like to make a public comment, two ways to do so based on whether you are here or remote. If you are here, raise your hand. Obviously, I can acknowledge you, hand you a microphone. Um, you can make your public comment with that. If you are remote, you use the hand raise feature at the bottom of your screen. Um, then I can acknowledge you that way. And in either case, we're gonna do first name, last name, town of residence um, before making any sort of public comment.
Okay, thank you. That's okay, welcome. All right, so uh we'll give a couple of minutes while we take a look at where we're moving next in the agenda, but if anybody from the online community does put up their hand, it certainly you'll stop and definitely that's in time and so following public comments, we have normally the student representative report. We obviously don't have that student representative yet, but that's something we probably need to act on to talk with the administration about how we can build that slide. Uh actually.
That's something we normally do, or?
Yes.
I know we have a representative, but who facilitates the process? Like, who facilitates that process?
Usually the principal.
Yep. So if we go into my report.
Yes.
I'll let you know that we have approximately three individuals who want to or interested in that role, and we would hope to be able to start that the next board meeting. Um, the question is, we have three individuals that we are aware of at this point in time who want to do it. Um, giving us a little bit of diversity, not anyone we've had before. Um, and uh some younger individuals, meaning some people maybe who might even have some longevity on uh in this role for uh years to come, uh younger high school um aged learners. So the question, we we have kind of already had this conversation where we wanted more than one simply because they could either trade off or make a schedule, have some different voices, they can come simultaneously if they wanted to and talk and give different perspectives. Um, so we thought too, also because we had someone last year who then during the winter timeframe, basketball was a long season and we have meetings during basketball games. So it didn't always work out well that way for the purpose of what this uh student representative is supposed to be for. So um we can have elections for this, or we could take the two or three who are interested in, which is what we're talking about right now. Um, you have a, I mean, thoughts on that?
I think having three of them is a great idea because if somebody plays a sport or they're sick or whatever the case, you have backups, but also I like the idea of two or three being able to come. They're gonna see things happening in the school totally different from each other. So even if they all came at once, they'd have a different perspective from each of them.
Good point. Thank you, Daisy. Anybody else have thoughts on that?
Yeah, I think if there's three people that wanna do it, then we should have all three of them, absolutely.
All right, I'll give that feedback.
That's excellent.
Tomorrow.
Sounds good to me.
It's great. You have three people who want to do it.
Yeah.
Encourage that.
Like, really? Yes.
Posture that, I'd say.
I didn't ask if he actually told them what it was all about.
Yeah, right?
Tale, you sure?
Do they know how long the superintendent board is?
Yeah, I know. I'm gonna be, I'm gonna be, I know, I know, I'm so bad. I I have so much to say all the time. Um, so along those lines, since the last time we have met, we did have, uh, I think, a nice meeting on October fifth in the evening for uh the kickoff of our birth through AIDS conversation. We had it out in the area here. The cafeteria, we were able to tour the early childhood center um and have some good conversations. I'm meeting tomorrow afternoon with the two other individuals who are working, the two other primary individuals who are working on that um with me. We are going to go over the notes. Um, we already have it drafted into themes and so forth, but we, before we send out the minutes to the people who were both involved in that evening's conversation. Uh, but there are a lot of other individuals who wanted to hear that as well and be part of future conversations, so uh we're gonna make sure that that's all situated, um, that that indeed the minutes are correct and the themes are what we have come up with so far. Also, as part of this grant, we have to report out and uh there has been interest in our school district from the standpoint of the other grant recipients. There has been requests to come and see our full day free K uh program that we have here um in both Jaffrey and Ridge. So on November ninth, a team from S U twenty-one, which is on the coast of New Hampshire, is coming this way to see both centers, both areas, and to discuss kind of how we've gone about implementing or going about change processes uh. The also will be presenting this week on a Zoom conference with all of the recipients throughout the state of New Hampshire, which is, there's about five other communities uh on that same topic, those same topics. They wanna know how things originated, how we've been able to fund, how, you know, what's our plan for sustainability, all that sort of thing. So that's neat. And of course, a plan for sustainability uh starts to weave into budget conversations. And so after a while, grant opportunities go away. We've been able to put some solidified programming in. Uh, we're very proud of the fact that we were able to build on something that we were already starting to do with that uh pre-K program, the full day four-year-old. We do know that it's been beneficial to our community, to the kids who are in it, but also um the research is very clear that it's beneficial to the community from a longevity standpoint, from a financial standpoint. Every dollar you put into early childhood, birth to five in New Hampshire, it was researched that you'd get two dollars back in the long run, basically. Um, some states, the investment yields much higher outcomes, but still, that's not too bad. And um but you have to think about it as a long-term investment, and so that's gonna definitely be a conversation during this year's budget season. Um, I have, so as we talked about budget season, um, I have had initial conversations uh more on a philosophical and programmatic level before we start talking numbers, but what's important with um technology, facilities, student services, the elementary schools and secondary. And we talked about that again this afternoon in our leadership team meeting and um talked about what the, we prioritized several of those items as to what we think was best for the district. All of it's in line with our goals and our our strategic planning and so forth. Um but we're well underway. Our next meetings with them will be in two weeks, the beginning of two weeks with Carrie. We'll start talking numbers. And then after that, we go through the process of them presenting to the finance committee, you know, it'll be several weeks in there or a couple of weeks. It'll be probably several meetings in there. And then uh we'll, you know, and we've just blown the entire month of November and we go into December and we start to uh go into some, the really exciting part of the budget season. So that's all important to kind of lay out there because we're gonna have conversations about that tonight.
Can I just, in in terms of this topic of?
Yeah.
You know, the meeting on early childhood.
Yeah.
Education, you you're talking ages one to eight, is that?
Birth, birth through age, yes, that was the grant. Usually when we talk about early childhood, we talk birth through five because there's a lot of brain research on um develop, the brain developing per through five. But uh as more and more schools are realizing that child dysregulation and other learning needs uh are very prominent within your kindergarten, first, second grade learners more and more. And so that birth through eight is the reason for the birth through eight. What are the systems you put in place as a community to help grow the children and and create a healthy, safe academically challenging, certainly, environment?
Okay, thank you.
Yep, and so the primary goal is to work together with community partners. Perhaps we'll be putting some pilots together, using some of those grant funds to get some data and maybe apply for federal grants in the future. Along with community meetings, their next Route two oh two meeting is in a couple Mondays from now, so not next Monday, but the following Monday. And next Monday, however, there is also another meeting in town. That's important, I think, for us to consider at least sending representation to, which is the, it's also about Route two oh two, but it's the construction, the future construction, the roundabouts and so forth within the downtown here. And I think that's happening. Is that at at the select board?
Yes.
The down near the police station?
It's happening at the fire.
The fire department.
Oh, it is. Okay. Okay, thank you for correcting me on that. Uh, yeah, I think, I think that's an important one. You know, the last time we met with the uh the staff from the town, when they came to our board meeting, uh, the indication was that, and this was sort of an aside conversation. I don't think, I'm not sure that I asked it during the actual meeting, but the impression was that we don't have a need for strobe lights, for the rapid flashing beacons. But I've seen personally some indications that intersections as complex as ours without those can be a danger. And I'm noticing that those beacons are appearing in more places, for example, in uh in in Peterborough on Route two oh two at the bottom of their new bridge, there's now a crosswalk with the beacons. And I I saw an incident recently in a roundabout that was strike, well, it was as close as anything I've seen so far to what the Jaffrey uh roundabout is gonna be. There's a road similar to Route two oh two going through this roundabout. It was a single lane roundabout. And a car coming into the roundabout, seeing there were no other vehicles in the roundabout, actually sped up so it could enter the roundabout without having to wait. When it did, it turned ninety degrees to the right to the go to the next exit. There was a person in the crosswalk.
Yep.
And uh the person jumped and the car hit its brakes, so.
This is, this is, this is common, and this is the conversation that was brought to the the community during those community meetings before, uh especially the closer you get that crosswalk to that circle, uh the more dangerous it can be. And so you gotta find some ways. I don't, I don't think we should wait for some catastrophe to happen in order to do something. These things are foreseeable. They, they're in place in a lot of locations because um of of the uh obvious need to provide safety and provide drivers. I mean, drivers, in fairness, drivers have a lot to think about as they're
That's right.
you know, driving on the road and navigating, making sure, you know, around a circle, trying to make sure that they're going in at the right time and not, you know, getting cut off and all that. So then you have people walking across as well in that type of environment, you know, so it makes sense to well, and kids, you're right, the majority of the individuals every single day that are gonna be walking that area are gonna be children.
There'll be some mornings and some winter evenings when they'll do it in the dark.
Yeah. Matter of fact, mornings for six months, right? Mornings and evenings in the dark.
Very long number to attach.
I know.
I know it's true, but.
October to April, right, so.
Like, the actual, like, six months they're walking in the dark.
It's it's only five and a half, though. Anyway.
Yeah, okay.
Monday.
Yep.
And and then the following Monday we'll have the Route two oh two vision.
So the meeting for the Rotary is Monday, October twenty-third at six P M. at the Jaffrey Fire Department.
Okay, good, thank you.
And it's uh it's a briefing on the traffic control plan phasing during the construction.
Right. Which is just another indication that they're very close to finalizing their plans, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Also, next week, there are some more C T E conversations coming up um with our architects, and so we'll be inviting some of those groups back, maybe via Zoom, to have some conversations with them um to listen to some of the feedback that they received during the first time around. And we um met with the architects last week, and we're trying to speed up some of our processes, some of the surveying and so forth. Uh, we feel pretty good about what we came up with at the end, but we'll, we'll talk about that then and talk about it at the Route two oh two meeting on the thirtieth.
And and that's the uh, the the meeting with the architects is on the twenty-third?
No, the twenty-fifth and the twenty-sixth, we are going to be um connecting with them again. I just, I don't have the format yet for that, so I will. Um, I have talked to Kim Baker and David Dustin to solidify that so that we can put messaging out.
Okay.
So lots happening. I mean, there's a lot more, certainly. Um, we have a early release day on Wednesday for the elementary and because we have been uh, we're putting some plans in place to continue our curriculum work. Again, you'll hear some of that conversation and see some presentations during the budget season around literacy and around some other areas that uh they are uh implementing Ames Web, which is a new assessment system um that will replace, we still have N W E A, but N W A will, we will stop paying for that and not doing it after this year. We have already stopped using it in the middle school and the high school. And so this tool that we're putting in place, the teachers are being um trained on it on Wednesday, and it is uh among other things, it is a good screener for dyslexia and it meets a state requirement law that has been increased from a, from a age standpoint as to when you're screening for that.
So of course, earlier, they.
Earlier and and well, these keep on, you want, they want you to keep on screening. Yep.
Yeah, so.
Okay. Um, making sure that you're not missing anything, and it's also a good tool for providing intervention or, well, you provide interventions, but also assessing if the interventions are working. It is a uh assessment system that is designed for a multi-tiered system supports. We actually have used it in the middle school here. My second year here, we implemented it, had a great use of, had a wonderful long year actually with it. And then um, I don't know, the following year, it was not utilized, so. And we've made some changes, and so here we go again. But we have a better infrastructure now.
You you called it a multi-tiered.
Multi-tier, yeah, so we've talked about M T S S B and implementing that over the period of three to five years. And that's multi-tiered system of supports for behavior and wellness. And so your academic is your typical multi-tiered system of support, meaning you want to have a really strong core or universal curriculum and instructional practice. And then you want to be able to have really strong um responses to when learners need more and how to go about, you know, helping them. And then, of course, you have a percentage of individuals who need a lot more. And so what are we doing for that? Making sure that that system is all set up. And it's, it repeats itself with behavior as well. You just use different tools and you have different educational approaches. So for instance, um I know, I know, I'm a little long. So for instance, the uh elementary is piloting second step, which is a um which is part of a tiered intervention system. Um, and it ties well with their responsive classroom work that they're doing as well, which is that universal language and um way of teaching and reteaching kids how to uh what the procedures are and what the expectations are and so forth.
Sounds.
Yeah.
No, thank you for going through a little bit of this detail. I think it's very helpful.
And you'll hear a lot more as the budget season goes, but it's consistent. It will, it will be similar to what you've heard before.
So um one of the things that I'm always wondering about is that in wondering if Ames Web can help with this, you know, sometimes we implement new curriculums or new systems and we we vote on them the board or we hear about them and we're excited. But it's hard to get the data, like, was that a successful program? Is this, can we look to, and I know Charlie's been all about, you know, getting a dashboard on the website for some things and
Yep.
is this, can Amos Web help um provide some data so that we know if interventions are working or?
Hmm. So it's um, so it's Ames Web, A I M S W E B. Um, and so that that's the assessment. Um, and we have, we actually have, it's a district um subscription, so we have it all the way through. Yeah, we we've used it, yep. Um, grade eight, um, they improve it. It is for the purpose of um making certain that your interventions are working.
Mm-hmm.
So it has a universal screener. And based upon that, you would say, all right, we found some holes in these areas. We need to help individuals. You might give them an intervention for, let's say, we're gonna put, have an intervention for six weeks. Every two weeks, you're progress monitoring. There's a progress monitoring tool just to see, is growth happening? And if not, then the conversation has to happen like in our P L Cs. The question is, what do students learn? Um you know, how do you know when they've learned? This is how, is that answering that question? All right, when you find out that they haven't learned it, what now do you do? Or if you found out that they've already learned it, then what's the process from there? Those are the four questions. Uh, it is probably not good for a data dashboard.
Right.
It would be, but but the state assessments and things of that nature would be um. But I do think that in our budget process this year, I've asked that when we go to um talking about anything that we're asking for or promoting or asking us to kind of keep, for instance, that we have good data to back everything that we're doing. Data can look like your typical qua- uh quantitative information that you would get from Ames Web or N W E A or the state assessment, the New Hampshire SAS is what it's called right now. Um, or it could be qualitative, so survey information from teachers. You'd probably see that more with like preschool because it takes years to find out academic growth and so forth, that based upon that. And then also, um, I'm a firm believer in using the data that other people have already done and and shown to be true beforehand. So good peer-reviewed research. Usually, peer-reviewed research has taken into consideration a ton of information that has, you know, from other schools, other parts of the country, what have you, to show that these, whatever it is, what um pre-K is beneficial to yeah, a school system. So rather than saying, well, I wonder if teaching four-year-olds here in Jaffrey and Ridge is gonna actually be beneficial to the school district. Well, it's it's a you know, national research would suggest that based upon a lot of data that they've, you know, um reviewed more than we'd ever be able to um that that was an important thing. So we'd wanna share that. So it needs to be rooted in research or our own data is the idea. Ames Web would help us with that.
All right, thank you, Ruben. Are there any other questions for Ruben on any of this? Would you mind repeating the last ten minutes of what you said?
I could.
No, I just.
I could.
I I bet you could.
I bet you.
No, I was, that was just a joke, so.
Uh, it was funny.
If uh.
But wouldn't it have been funny if I had to start again?
Yes, yes.
Okay, I missed.
And I would have been trying.
I missed the opportunity.
But uh, no, I think it's, it's, it's all good for us. And, you know, we sometimes get off into conversations that, you know, maybe are important, but not always necessary, and especially when you look at the time. But uh, when you talk about these things, it's always uh useful and valuable. U- usually. Well, certainly was tonight. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Seven out of ten times, you know, I just go for.
Hey, seven out of ten.
Seven's not bad. We're okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So um, I I think we're ready to uh re- ready for our consent agenda. If does anybody have any questions or comments about the consent agenda, we've already removed the non-public mean minutes from September eighteenth, I think it was. Yes. So if nobody has any other questions on the yes, go ahead, Daisy.
Simple question, the old Sturbridge Village trip. I'm assuming that is third grade? Taylor Mc.
Backman, yeah.
Is is that third grade?
I feel like I don't know.
That is third grade.
Typically, that trip is third grade. Didn't recognize.
Taylor's a third grade teacher this year, yes.
How's it?
Good. Good.
I would like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda as admitted.
Thank you, Christine, and thank you, Daisy. Okay, so all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
You know, I say aye, so that's passes five zero. And then if someone would like to make a motion concerning the minute, the non-public minutes for September eighteen.
I'll make a motion to approve the non-public minutes from September eighteen.
Thank you, Daisy.
I'll second.
And thank you, Christine. So all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstained?
Aye.
Okay, thank you, Kim. And so that passes four zero to one. And then we're onto our action items, and the first one is the Ringe Recreation Department Youth Basketball Program, uh, request to waive facility fees.
Brins Rec Basketball Program meets Saturdays.
This is all on that.
Doing this for years, yep.
Yeah, it goes with Heather, right? Like the athletic director, do they have that little thing that they sign up? I don't know, it's kind of a.
This is, yeah, Master Library, yep. But I believe they're asking for Saturdays is, uh, so it's
Yep.
And so it's gone through that, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'll make motion to approve the Ringe Rec Basketball waiver.
I will second.
Okay, thank you, Chris, and thank you, Kim. And uh, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. And, uh, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. So that's five zero. That was approved. And now we have the budget development calendar. And this one, once we approve it, we're all committing to. Work on this schedule.
So it's just very similar to what we've done in the past, um, certainly last year and years before. Um, there is one little glitch that was brought to my attention by someone who is going to be a. Absent on that Saturday. Who would need to be there probably for, um. A discussion relative to the budget. Jen Horn. It has her final. Uh, presentation that she needs to give on the ninth of December. Uh, for her doctoral courses that she's taking and. Um, someone else here also is supposed to be doing that as well, so.
Uh, Christine.
Yeah, so so Ruben and Jen, um, have a class on that date, so, um. That makes it very difficult for us to be there. Now, uh. That being said, putting it to the sixteenth makes it very difficult for. For the business office to do what it needs to do if any changes get made and so forth, so.
Yes.
Um, another, another thing to consider, it would be tough to. Ask, I would, you know, I wouldn't wanna necessarily ask all all the administrators across all the schools to. Um, have to attend, and I certainly don't wanna make it something that the board would have to do as well. I, you know, afternoon. On that day is open for myself. I'd be more than happy to meet me afternoon to continue. Uh, doing that sort of thing on a Saturday, but that's tough, that's a tough. Thing to ask people to wanna do.
Where's your graduation party? What's that? Schedules?
Oh, that's, I got, I got a lot more to do. This is just a course. Yep.
Well, I, you know, just speaking for myself, a Saturday afternoon to me is no worse than a Saturday morning. There's a lot of things I tend to like to get done on Saturday morning, whereas the afternoon becomes. I don't know how that. Plays out for other people, I mean, but.
Well, I guess Saturdays alone are always difficult.
You know, the the other thought is Thanksgiving is kinda early this year, right? Could we do it on the second?
Yeah, Thanksgiving's the twenty-third. So there'd be a whole week in between Thanksgiving and if we did it on the second.
Right.
Is Carrie online?
Yes.
Doesn't matter if it goes before the. What?
That mean? Carrie, does changing it to the second? Mean lots of different dates have to get changed across the schedule?
No, as far as that meeting is concerned, it would not make a difference. A lot of these other ones are required by RSA. So, uh, if if we push it out later is when it gets problematic, because then I have deadlines I have to meet. Um, if we make it on the second. It doesn't impact those deadlines. It just means that we have to make sure that we meet with. Of the principals and they're able to get everything done. Uh, by that time. Uh, but our first meeting was the fourth, so it's really not much. Much different than.
Only a couple days before, yeah.
Right.
So it would change, what what would happen is it would change the order of the conversation. So we would go through. And have our bulk of our conversations on that Saturday on the second. And then.
Finish up on the.
Finish, well, try, try to finish up on the fourth, yeah, but then you'd have some time in case you needed. To do something else if you had to. And that model replaces having like, you know, three Mondays that we used to have. We used to have like, you know, three Mondays in a row of this. And Mondays are not always the most advantageous time to have. Conversations about this. You're stopping and starting and stopping and starting, you know. And in theory, we would have had. Initial presentations to the finance committee from all of the cost centers already beforehand. And hopefully the finance committee would have some. Uh, thoughts and feedback to us beforehand, so. Carrie, is that something like getting everything situated by that date? Is that possible?
I think it should be. As I said, I would have had to have it done by the fourth. The only thing. That, um, could be an issue is if on the second, there were a lot of changes that needed to be made. I don't know that I'd be able to get them all done on the fourth. That would be it, but I could certainly, you know. Make an effort. Because that would just give me, you know, one, like one day to get everything done. But. But I don't see an issue, no. Are you still there? Okay.
Yes, yeah.
Sorry, I thought I lost you for a minute.
No, thank you, uh, Carrie. I I should have spoken up and said that right away, thanks. You know, it's it's funny, one of the things, well, actually, I won't get off on this topic right now. It's it's just concerning not being able to see you. You know, the members of the public. But, uh, yeah.
Uh, the second is fine for me.
What about others? I mean, it's it's always a challenge, right?
Two months or one and a half in advance, I can.
Yeah.
You can work, make it a priority and be there, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
So. You don't see any obvious conflict?
Whatever it is, I can change.
Okay. Thank you. And I'm feeling the same way. I'm not gonna open my calendar, but I don't know of anything that day, so. Whatever comes up will worth of it. So what about the rest of the calendar? As, uh, I think it's been pointed out, but many of these dates are locked in, locked in, yeah. All right, there's, um, now, you know, this becomes a very personal thing because. It's us, you know, agreeing to get together and work through this budget and. It's not only. The, uh. Business and finance staff that has a lot of work to do, we also have a. Responsibility to be prepared as best we can, so. If anybody. Has any thoughts or comments or or questions about this too. I, there are times when we get these and we approve them and then look at the dates later and say, hey, wait a second, you know.
Most all of the other meetings are all. On our normal Monday meetings. There's one. On Thursday, January eleventh. Which is. The budget hearing.
Right.
But the rest are all.
There's a deliberative session on a Wednesday, too.
Yep.
The reds are the deadlines.
Oh, thank you. Okay, that's what I thought.
Yeah, and I just double-checked, um. The the public hearing and the deliberative session were already. Um, tentatively marked at those dates anyway, so those have already been out there. Um. Think the budget, yeah, the the twelve-nine meeting was already on there, so you guys. Already kind of approved this, but we always go through after the fact and.
And I made a motion that we accept this calendar, the change of the Saturday. Being. December second.
Okay. Thank you, Daisy. And.
I'll second.
And thank you, Chris, for the second. All right, so we have a motion to, um. Amend this. Budget to make our Saturday meeting prior to our. Our, uh. Regular board meeting, and that would be on. Twelve oh two. So. Uh, yes.
Um, can I just request the either? The emotion is the motion, the motion is amended to, um. Also change the regular school district calendar or to have a second motion that also changes that calendar. I guess changing that ninth date would now make your standard school board calendar not aligned with your budget development calendar.
I will amend. My motion to also change the school board calendar to include the. Meeting on Saturday, December second.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you both. And, uh. Chris, I assume you're.
I will, I'm.
Fine with that, okay. All right, if there's no further discussion, then all those in favor. Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And opposed? No one's opposed, so that passes. So we now have a budget development calendar. Cool.
Thank you, Carrie.
Uh, uh, thank you. I did just think of something, though, um. A snow date, sorry. I think the motions and that it passed was fine, but we have a snow date scheduled. So I don't know if we wanna change the snow date. That was in lieu of, you know, for that twelve-nine meeting, that is now going to be on the second. Um. At the bottom, there should have been a snow date. Yeah. So I don't know if we wanna change that.
Well, we don't have a snow date on here now, is that?
No, it's at the bottom of the schedule.
Yeah. Uh, okay.
That it's. The snow date would be this, um, Saturday, the sixteenth. We could make a snow date.
So can we, uh, leave that then as the? As the date, or is that a, uh?
Well, unless you wanted to make the snow date in the afternoon on that day.
Yeah.
One o'clock is when we could get back at the earliest.
Okay. Well, that sounds good to me. So that worked for everybody else? We'd have the snow date as the ninth of December?
Do you, do we wanna push it to two P M? So you definitely have time to be back.
I think that's a good idea, yeah, maybe come back and have a bite to eat or whatever.
Too too fine, yeah, yeah, yeah.
That way it's just giving you and Jen a little bit more of a cushion to be able to.
And John can make sure he gets to the dump before, you know, well, I mean, right, they close around one or two.
So that's.
It's a real issue. So.
Okay. So then we'll, uh, go, go, go make a motion to.
I make a motion to change the snow date of the. Saturday meeting. To be Saturday, December ninth at two P M.
Great. Thank you, Daisy.
Do I need to change the school board calendar on that one, too? Yes. And to include changing the school district. School board meeting calendar as well.
Good, okay.
I'll second that.
So thank you, Daisy, and thank you, Christine. So all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so that passes five zero. And we have a, uh, a calendar.
Thank you.
So, sorry, what was that?
I said, thank you.
Oh, okay. Okay, great. So moving right along. We have, uh, a presentation on communication updates and goals. All right.
To reorient myself so I could also be on the cameras. Um, so I was asked by Ruben to come here, um. Cause I'm not always here, obviously, um, to present on communication and, you know, just looking at goals. What we're doing, um. There's been a lot that's happened over the past couple of years. There's been a lot that's even happened over the past couple of months and past couple of days. Um, so just giving the board kind of a more broad, um, strokes update on kinda. Where we were, where we are, where we're heading. Um. So just wanted to start with an overview, um. So prior to me being hired, um, and again, uh, for anybody who doesn't know me, I'm June O'Handy, I'm the communications coordinator in the school district. Uh, sorry, school board secretary. Um, so I was hired in May of twenty nineteen. Um, the district at that point had already been working toward, um. Some communications issues and some struggles that were happening. Um, there was a group of over twenty people that came together, formed a committee. Um, wanted to create a plan, um, to try to address some communication shortages. Um. That plan was approved, uh, at the first school board meeting in June of twenty nineteen, which was actually my first school board meeting. Um, as secretary and also, um, communication coordinator, so it kinda felt like it dovetailed really nicely. New plan gets approved. I get hired, I come in, I'm starting to kinda work with things. Um, so we did, we had that original plan in twenty nineteen. We have since revised that plan, uh, which was done about two years ago. Um, we have continued to have the communication committee, uh, meet in a couple of different capacities. That group of over twenty people ended up dwindling and dwindling, came down to maybe a group of. Uh, six to nine, that group started to get to three, four people. Um, so we looked at, okay, um. How do we change this group? How do we revamp? How do we revise? So when our. Going into our second year of the like kinda third iteration of the committee. Um, which is attempting to be a little bit more proactive, um, the meetings thus far have been a little bit more focused on. Specific topic areas, um, we've met one time this year. And we're trying to focus on like essentially a planned revision to kinda see where we need to go. Um, where the shortages fall now. Um. Throughout these past couple of years, we haven't really changed the vision for how we communicate. Um, it was really important that that core kinda piece of information came together, um. And we kinda try to guide all of our communication by those, that vision. The thing that has changed over time is that we've added and fleshed out further the like overarching goals of what the district wants. We started with two main, um, goals, which has now evolved into three. Um, so, um, we wanted to add in more of a community involvement piece. That's focused on external, focused on student involvement, things like that, because before it was just internal communication, external communication. Um, so we, uh, in order to kinda make sure that we have a pulse on what we want. What other people want, we've been trying to survey every couple of years. Um, that survey work is currently being worked on. We hope to have a survey out soon. So that we can have more revisions to kinda know where people feel that we fall. Um, so I just wanted to put it up here. This is in the plan, um, this is the vision for communication. Um, it's a couple of statements. Um, the one change that I made from the plan is that the second line, instead of a bulleted list, I just listed them so that it all fit on one page. But that's, that's kinda the guiding force behind our communication right now. And these were all pieces taken from what those folks felt weren't working back in, you know, twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen. Um. You know, a lot of work continues to be done in different capacities. It's it's expanded a lot greater. I really wanted to include these two kinda visuals, cause I feel like they're important. I feel like we kinda show them a lot, but I feel like it's important to show that they apply to more than just. The one area. Um, so these are pulled straight from our multi-year plan. Which, you know, we just recently looked at and we approved. You have this, uh. Which, you know, we just recently looked at and we approved, you have this um, you know, Venn diagram of communication collaboration community. Um, I refer to them as the three Cs, obviously, my job in my purview is communication. But without my ability or my um willingness or my work in collaborating with other people, with being mindful of the community and working with the community, like none of those. Pieces really work in one spot, so I think it's important to kind of really constantly think about those three pieces collectively. And I feel, I've always told people, when I've been working on communication initiatives. That everything that I want to do is looking at things from the foundation of the ground level so that we can build up. I don't want to build up here if we don't have a strong foundation, because it's just not gonna be sustainable. So we have, I feel like when I came here, based on what everybody was telling me, we had arrows going in different directions, some things were really strong, but they weren't going in the right direction. Some arrows were weak, but they were going in the right spot, so it's all about pulling all those arrows, let's all move forward, let's make sure it works. Um, so just a little bit of information about the um. Kind of survey efforts that we've done, if you go into the more recent twenty twenty one plan, you can get more, a lot more um in-depth information on actual statistics. That we have comparing that twenty eighteen survey to that twenty twenty one survey. On those two que- uh the questions asked in both were very similar, and the design behind that was to see what was growing, what wasn't growing. Um, ultimately, um, we didn't see. I don't remember there being a single area where there wasn't some level of data showing growth. Um, we had areas that were ranked were very low, that some of them maybe only went up a little bit higher, we had some that completely. Uh, you know, this was bad and now it's great. Um, but we also wanted to have more of a critical look at certain things, so there were a lot of questions about like, even if you're thinking that we're doing a great job, what can we do better? Because even if we're doing a great job, we don't want to say, okay, we've done what we can do, let's just keep this going, there's always the innovation, there's always the change. Um. Looking at some of these points, um in twenty twenty one, people were really uh happy and satisfied with how we were using different tools. But there was also that secondary piece of like, we want you to continue to streamline, we want you to continue to look at what you're doing and make sure that everything's cohesive. Um, a lot of people were talking about this idea of like phones are becoming more popular, how can we send more information directly to a phone, whether it be a text message, a push notification, so on. Um, but a lot of people had talked about, you know, information's now easier to find. If I don't maybe know where the information is, I at least am starting to understand who I need to ask for information. So it's more about, it's not just about is the information there, is it accessible, but if it's not, or I can't personally find it. How do we move forward? Um, one other piece I just wanted to show, um, just referring to data, because, you know, Ruben had talked about this idea of being very data driven. Um, I'm gonna pull two things up really quick, it's not anything I'm gonna go through in super depth. But this is uh Google Analytics, this is how we run all of our um information in terms of looking at um. Website views, website impact, um. Over the summer, we recently built in some M T S S B pages into each of the schools' websites and the district's website. And I worked with the M T S S B team to give them an overview of since we implemented those pages. How many people had viewed them and how, how many views they had, but also how many people did it, so you might have had fifty views, but only ten people, or you might have had. Twenty views, but eighteen people doing it, because it can identify those unique users, it can identify where they're coming from, it tells you what your most popular pages are. It can show you pages that people aren't necessarily looking at, so how do we? If we see that there's important information on a page that we really want people to know about, but they're not actually accessing that information. We can look at, okay, how do we actually promote that? And this is broken down for each of our websites, I have the ability to dig further into data. Um. So that's one tool that we have. Um, and then another one. That I use a lot is um. Social media has been a really important tool for us. And um I've, I I know I've given snapshots in other meetings or applications about like. Um, social media data, but Facebook, our Instagram and Facebook are linked. So through uh Facebook's meta service and functionality, we have the ability to look at things like a reach, which is somebody being able to interact with your content. Um, how many followers you have, what is the growth pattern? Um. Where is the data, what things are working, what things are not working, it'll even um identify, for example, if I'm posting, if I want to post something tomorrow. It'll tell me, um, okay, you should post that at eight o'clock, because that's when your specific followers are actually. Coming onto their phones and looking at Facebook, that's when they would be more likely to be able to see it. So being more intelligent about not just what we're posting, but how we're posting it, when we're posting it, where we're posting it. Um, so there is a lot of data work that does go into. How we utilize these tools, even something as simple as a website, a Facebook page, so on. Um, so just a really broad overview of goals, our communication plan has always been divided by our main goals. And then I guess a better thing for this would be action steps, not goals. Um, so action steps are defined as things that we need to be doing as a district. Um, and usually there's a lot more information in the plan about like status updates, what we need to do, what actual goals, the action steps are um. Honoring or um supposed to be moving forward. Um, so in looking at our action steps and our goals, our twenty nineteen plan. Most things were completed by twenty twenty one, if you go to this um presentation, you want to look at it, you can click right here. It actually um is a report that I gave to the communication committee before we revised the plan again to show where we were at. In April of twenty twenty one, I believe, and that'll give you literally. Action step by action step, are we complete? If we're not complete, what do we still have to do? Um, so I just wanted to provide that as a resource, I haven't done it yet for the most recent plan. Um, if you click on twenty nineteen and twenty twenty one, those give you the two different versions of the plan, so if the board wanted to do any sort of cross comparison of. What the goals were in twenty nineteen, what they were in twenty twenty one, that information's available for you. Um, we are in a place where a lot of these twenty twenty one goals um are complete or very much in progress. Uh, when I say in progress, it doesn't mean they're gonna be done in a week or in a month, some of these might be six months out, might be a year out, might be two years out. But there's at least a process that started that's tangibly showing us that there is growth and intention behind it. Um, and then one of the things that the communication committee, as I said before, we're looking at the status of those goals. Seeing if there are more goals, are there some goals that we carried forward from twenty nineteen that just don't matter anymore? Um. Do they need to change, you know, four years is a really, really, really long time in communication. Um, you know, if you even think about what type of phone you had four years ago versus what you have now, and how much faster it is, how much bigger, how better the screen and the camera is. Every single year, technology's innovating. Um, but also, one thing that's already been highlighted is we've been doing a lot of really amazing. Uh, technological and digital um promotion communication, you know, COVID really kind of had to force us there, just due to the nature of um. What was going on, but you know, how do we start weaving in that in-person, that physical, that more mindfulness in the day-to-day? Um, this is a big list of highlights over the past four years, I didn't separate them between twenty nineteen, twenty twenty one goals. Just because, again, some things evolved, ramped up, et cetera. Um, I do want to bring up um just a few things, like we have the new websites, a lot of people know those um at this point. Um, we were able to separate everybody so that they have their own website, back with the old website plan, it was S A U forty seven dot org, and each school only had its own. Page, so if you wanted to find information, you often had to scroll to the very bottom of the page, and you had to click buttons. And because we had a system that was really not working for us, there were buttons everywhere, there were buttons that were outdated, buttons that didn't make sense. And just, it wa- it was a free-for-all with information. Um, the reason why I wanted to highlight these two different websites, being the elementary and the middle high school, is because there was a lot of work. If you look at this basic structure up top here, that was how we built everything to start. And this was a couple of years ago when we made these go live, um over the summer, I worked with the middle high school and we actually revamped. You know, we had a couple of years with the websites, we had a better understanding of what we were doing, how do we better. Orient information so it's easier to find, so the middle high school worked with them, they said, hey, forms and general information, more information on teaching and learning. That's an area that we're gonna continue to build out. Um, school counseling, we're gonna build that out into be, being something that's a lot more of a better resource, but for now, we have a lot of those M T S S B resources there. You know, extracurriculars, and then some of your departments, so just wanting to show you guys that even though there's a new website. It's not like, here's the website, we don't need to change, like there's still that continual mindset of how do we innovate, how do we make this better? Um. You did see an example in those websites of branding, and that they were both. Look, they looked exactly the same in structure, but they were different colors, they had different logos, they had different photos. And again, your information is different and varied based on your school. So that if you belong to J G S, you don't feel like you have to go to an S A U website and dig through a bunch of information to find something relevant to your own situation. Um, what I've really loved about the branding is we've taken this effort and all the schools have really latched onto it, they're really proud about it. You know, students are really happy, staff's really happy, people want shirts, people want lanyards, people want, you know, we have logos when you walk in on the floor now, like. You're starting to really have that like picture of. These are the colors, these are the things, here's the mindset, it's going into social media, websites, facilities, everywhere. Um, you know, I'm talking right now, I'm talking to the board, I'm seeing you guys, we have, you know, a a public audience, we also have a digital audience. I'm currently listening to myself talk, so that I can make sure that the live stream is working, I'm watching the live stream, I have a bunch of screens in front of me to make sure it's all going. That's been a great service for us. Um, it's a lot of like bang for your buck in terms of innovation and that we are live streaming, we're getting a lot of people to be able to show up to meetings that previously couldn't. Because they're just listening to them at home, we're recording them as we're live streaming them, they're going up on our YouTube page. You know, you can go through these, um, everything goes up there, um for meetings, everything's kind of. Got its own icon based on what it is, you can go to playlists and you can um. You know, go to all these different pieces on things, so there's just a lot of like breakdown. And there, and again, it's S A U forty seven broadcast, if you're looking for any of that. Um. But we're not just doing this for live streaming school board meetings, we're doing graduation events, we're doing poetry out loud, um we have a crew of students that. Has worked the past couple of years to do basketball games, um through some of our work, we're talking about can we get power and internet infrastructure outside? So can we expand this into fall and spring sports, um you know, could we live stream a field hockey game or a soccer game? Um. You know, there's just all these different applications, all this equipment can be broken down, changed based on whatever we need it to do.
Is there, this is a random question, is there a way to get? I think I just found it. To. The school YouTube page from the.
Yep.
I think I found it, it's a little.
At the top of every website. You can immediately access the Facebook page and you can access the the um YouTube, so it's right there, you click it and it just. Boom, right there.
As soon as I said it, I.
No, that's okay, I mean, but it's a good note to make, because it's then just a reminder and showing of people that that's, s- some of that information now is that. Upfront in a very small, easy way that you can just click on an icon and be transported.
Right.
Um, a big initiative that we're trying to do now that we have more of a good foundational understanding of what we're doing, what we're trying to do. Trying to work more with learners on things so that they can develop skills, interests, et cetera, I already brought up live streaming basketball as an example. Um. You know, I brought this up recently um at another meeting, but we have a student-run Instagram page specific to sports. I actually met this morning with another student um for National Honor Society, they came and they're like, hey, we want to get our information out there. Can you help us create an Instagram page? And. A lot of the discussion was like, well, the issue that we continue to keep having is somebody will start an Instagram page, we'll put four or five things on there, somebody will. Age out, we'll lose the login, we'll lose the password, we have to start over again, so if you look, there's, you know, multiple. C H S interact Instagram pages, and they all have forty, fifty followers, and they all have fortified posts, because they're creating a new thing every year. Through talking with a lot of students, learners, um. They're saying, hey, like Instagram is where we like to see information, we're not looking at Facebook, we're looking at Instagram. Right now, Instagram is largely a duplication of what we're doing on Facebook, how do we innovate? In Instagram, to create an alternative resource that maybe is more accessible to Instagram, these. Uh, this learner that I was talking to today is like, hey, like, can we start like maybe getting more clubs involved in this, and can we do like club takeover days? Where the, where, you know, each day like a club can, you know, post a couple of stories about what they do and introducing members and things like that, um. You know, can we create different posters and advertisements about different initiatives that we're doing, um can we put little videos and things up there and just having? Having this place where we're actually being able to communicate to other learners and meeting them where they're at. Instead of just saying, hey, we have an Instagram page, we're just kind of. Putting stuff on there and hoping it sticks. Um, so there's a lot of power and work on that, and then sometimes classes will reach out and ask to work. Uh, the biggest example I have of that is a couple of years ago, um for a public speaking course, we actually set up a recording booth over there, um. Brought all the audio equipment in, we sat the learners down, um they were able to run through an audio presentation, um. It was, I believe, a history themed or Memorial Day themed um presentation, and they all just kind of went through their lines, they worked on their like. Cadence and all these other pieces that they were learning in public speaking, but then they had this finalized recorded product that they were able to put with their PowerPoint presentation. And then it actually became a larger part of a Memorial Day video that we did, which is on the YouTube page, you can find it, but there's a whole se-. Section, I believe, in the center, where it's just learners talking through their presentations and. They have a, an actual deliverable piece that they can show people. Um. A lot of work on like more internal things as well, uh we created a policy website prior to that. Um, I think the only thing we had remotely was a Google Drive full of the policies, so there was no searchability to it. Um. We are still trying to work, I'm trying to work with I T to stabilize that, because I do understand that sometimes, um. The policy website does cut out and doesn't work for everybody, so we're trying to make sure that that's a consistent product that we can offer, but it's fully searchable, it's fully updatable. Um. And then also going through this policy audit and making sure all our policies are up to date, but creating another foundational tool. And that the policy committee now has a spreadsheet that has every single policy on it that's linked right to the policy. It tells you the last time that we've approved the policy, the last time we've reviewed the policy, it tells you whether that it's a required policy. Um, recommended, optional, and it also tells you when the um. And then you have your school board association last reviewed or revised the policy. And then anything that's considered out of step with what the school board association has done, it gets highlighted in a color that's color-coded based on its priority or importance. So that the policy key, policy committee can look at that and say, hey, these are the policies we really need to focus on. Um, we're working on digitizing a lot of processes, we had a lot of like very like paper-driven forms. Where you have a form that has to go to eight different people and it's physically being handed to eight people. And you know, there's a lot of like, oh, well, where'd this person's form go? Well, I don't know, well, who was the last person that signed it? Well, I don't know, we don't have any way to be accountable, because it's a physical. Piece of paper. Um, we have Frevo, we have Docstar, we have all these programs that the board's been hearing about, where it's, things are now digitized, everybody's, you know, able to log in. Uh, you know, now, when I get my um. Stipend forms that I use to generate for the school board report, they all come to me as a step in the process, I'm able to look at that, I pull the information, I put it on your report. I send it off to the next person, and you know, everybody has that accountable step. Um. School communication was something that was um touched on, and each school has done a really great job of um innovating or. Creating consistency in newsletters, every school has a newsletter, um they're all weekly, um the. Middle high school has a weekly and a monthly, because they see value in the different types. Um. We've worked on a number of district type of communications and newsletters and things like that, including ones that are now sent to the home. In the event that people don't have as much of an access or desire to go on the internet. Um. Social media numbers continue to grow, um we are officially over two thousand followers, which is really amazing for a district of our size. If you look at the metrics of our pages versus even larger districts in our area. If we are creating a consistency in posting, we are actually beating them with our um metrics. Um, we're at a point right now where I'm working with the different schools, um we've actually established a posting schedule now, so there, we're hopefully going to be in a place where. Monday through Friday now, there will be guaranteed at least one post on Facebook every single day. And we've broken that up where each school gets their own day to post, and they can post about, you know, whatever they want to, it can be just a couple of photos, it can be an initiative. We have each of those, um I I think. Tomorrow or sometime soon, I have just a generic thing going out about the school board, like, hey, here's some places that you can find information about the school board. Come budget season, we can start talking about different things like that. Um, but again, creating that daily post, and then obviously, we can always do more. And then, um, a really big focus is the new staff system of record, which is Alma. While that's really great and does a number of wonderful things for the schools, it's also really amazing for communication. Because now for the first time since I've been here, we have good, consistent, reliable student and guardian data. It's been switched to a data model that is accessible and filterable from a communication perspective, and we're now able to use that to better fit, um. Create and build a communication structure. Yes.
I, I wanted to ask about the segment of people who. You know, intentionally don't use Facebook. And I know that the social media is extremely important part of what we do. And it's a way to reach our. Important part of our. Community, but there is a portion of the community that not only doesn't use. Social media, but has made a conscious decision. Uh, you know, not to, not to do that for various reasons, so. Are there other? I mean, I, I know that you're not only talking about social media here, obviously, right, there's, there's our website and stuff, but. Just wondering. You know, how do we get like to our older voters, for example, or to people we want to reach who. You know, we want to bring into the school community. Uh, though a big kind of topic of conversation has been trying to make our schools more like community schools. So that in addition to our students, our learners and their parents, families, that we also, you know, bring other members of the community in.
Well, and that's a piece, um, that's not. Currently a focal point of either plan, the twenty nineteen or the twenty twenty one plan, there wasn't a lot in there about. Physical. Things, it was all, it was very digital driven because at the time that's what was said was needed. Um, and then obviously COVID hit and things went incredibly digital because we were in some ways forced to be digital. Um, you know, I remember that first school board meeting where like COVID really hit. And we had tried to come, we, we didn't have all this equipment yet and we tried to find a computer and we were pointing. A camera with a, a computer with a webcam at the entire school board and trying to carry it around so that people could be heard. Um, so we had to do those changes, but, um, the communication committee, one of the things that's been brought up is. You know, how do we start working on some of that more physical stuff? We did take a really big first step. This last budget season to say, hey. Our last budget didn't pass, what are some reasons why? Maybe some of it was, usually some of it is lack of education. How do we maybe have a more broad reach? That's when we went to that physical mailer, that idea of, hey, what do we have that can be a physical deliverable? That will go to everybody's home in town. Whether you're connected or not connected. Some of the survey work that we're, I'm gonna try to work on doing with that, um, we're gonna. Try to allude to it in the next community newsletter that we send out to everybody that we are doing a community survey. And I'm gonna find ways to. Have people at whatever level they'll, they're at, be able to access that survey, you know, we're gonna try to put a QR code on there, we're also gonna say, hey, if you can't access technology, like, please call us. Like, I, if I have to, I will sit on the phone with somebody. And I will ask them questions and I will fill out the survey for them, I will print out a survey and I will bring it to them. You know, that, that openness and willingness to say, hey, like you are not being reached by what we have. We want to reach you even if in just a survey effort to say. How, how do you want to be reached? How do I reach you? What do you want to know? Because. We, we focus a lot on our. Students, our parents, our guardians, our staff, the people that are connected. But when it comes to voting season, you immediately open up to both towns all the way through. Anybody who's a eighteen plus registered voter now suddenly has a say in what we're doing. And to that point, they might not know anything about the district, other than we have a school, there are kids that go there, they learn. So that's where we start trying to focus on how can we? Have those opportunities, are there forums we can do, are there? Physical mailers, are there, like, what are, what are those ways to access those people? So that is a goal of the, the next survey is not just to focus on. What's being done here, but how do we branch out even further? So that we can grow and expand, capture those people in whatever way they feel that they need to, um, be met.
What, what are some, do you have some ideas on that, John? It's certainly an area of interest to me, and I think if people are coming to you and. You may have an idea for. Well, I, how best to connect, right? Because, you know, digitally is probably not the way. In person is the way, I don't think, you know. We do offer these forums, school board meeting, but it's not really an interactive forum, right? Even if they have comments, there's limited time to. You know, really discuss issues as we would. You may be as normal people, uh, other than a board, do you have any ideas on? Uh, best to, uh, approach that?
You, you know, I think some of what. We're already doing is maybe the model, I mean, we're using through. The digital world and especially social media, you know, push notifications, if you, if you. Do use the app, you get on, you're gonna see things that we want you to see because they're gonna pop up. And I, I think in the non-digital world, there's, you know, a little bit of the same. Thing, you know, we want to kind of find a way to. You sort of popped into people's consciousness if. Uh, you, you know, if possible, and you know, there, there's limits obviously to how far. One, one item that I, I thought. It, uh, I've thought of a couple of times is when we do print. Mailers, that would be worthwhile to print extras. Because, uh, I don't know if it's the post office, I actually doubt it, I think it's people who are inundated by mail sometimes just. Pass things on to their, you know, recycling bin without looking carefully, you know, they get busy and. And then later they hear, wow, the school district put something out, I'd like to see it, you know, so if we had extra documents that we could put out. I, I also wonder about having PDFs on certain things we want to communicate. You know, there may be times when we can't. Do mailers because they're expensive, but we could. You know, some, some people, it's not that they're totally out of the digital world, but they're still in the email realm more than the. Well, you know, social. So things like that.
You know, yes.
Yes, Daisy, sorry.
To comment with that. Especially. In. An election year, presidentially. The amount of mail. That people are getting on a regular basis right now. Can be a little overwhelming, um, so. We also may want to be mindful of that, of the amount. That everybody is getting right now because the elections are coming up. But having extras and having them. In the libraries, in the town office, places that. Those that aren't on social media would be more likely to get that information.
Yeah, it's a good point.
And part of that is just building some of these back up, part of this is, you know, when you look at the newsletters, we're. In the process of currently crafting our fourth newsletter. And that's an unbudgeted item right now because we started doing them in a budget season where we didn't accommodate that. So while we can plan in this year. What do we want to do budgetarily from like a, a printing and advertising level, um, to do some of these things? Right now, some of it's just being mindful of costs because when you're doing four of these even a year and they're, you know, three thousand dollars a year, I know that like in the grand scheme of our. Entire budget, it's not a huge deal, but also being mindful of like. You, you know, even three thousand dollars at a time, that's three thousand dollars that has to come from another line item. Um, so to speak to the PDF piece, anything that we do is generated. In a PDF, um, so these are the school district newsletters that we have right now, it's important links on the SEU website, you go down to. Sorry, my eyesight's not super great. Um, district newsletters, school district news, you go here, volume three. You click on it. You go right here, it's right here, we can theoretically print it out, the quality's not going to be the same, it's not going to be as good. But we could, we could print out a couple of these on a regular printer and we could staple them together. It's, it's not something we couldn't do. But I think the one thing that is really important in that planning effort and in that thought and that mindset, talking about there being a lot of mail being sent home, especially in a political year. The, the beauty behind branding and all of these other initiatives is we now have a, a system where we can send out a newsletter and it's like. There's my school right there, I open this up, it doesn't matter what school I'm affiliated with, I'm a Ringe person, I see that Ringe eagle, I see that Ringe logo. I'm not gonna throw that away because I know it, I know it means something to my district, to my school. Um, you know, people are still gonna throw it away, but I've, that was something that I heard in that first one that we sent out was, I was gonna throw it away, but then I saw. Oh, hey, there's a Conan logo, like, what is this? Or, oh, hey, there's that JR, here, here's the owl. So I think that's important, it is kind of tough, I wanted to bring up the, go back to the vision because one of the things that we talked about really early on. And why I think that this still holds very true to this day. Is if you read that last line, that is one thing that does impact us a lot, all stakeholders understand that communication is a two-way street. We can be communicating here, there and everywhere. If people don't want to hear it, if they don't want to come to us, if we aren't creating a situation which they want to see it or hear it, they're not going to. And if we don't create that infrastructure, that understanding, it's not gonna happen. You know, I, I think about coming here, I've been, I've been going to school board meetings even before I started here for this district for seven years. If it's not a controversial issue, we don't have more than four people here. Most nights we have one or none. Digital audience has brought us up to, you know, we get three to five people. Um, we've ha- held state of the districts and other forums, the, there were summer forums at the middle high school. I hear on a good night, we might be able to get twenty, thirty people, so it's how do we create that? Connection or that desire to even have people show up. Um, and that's always gonna be a tough issue, we talked about volunteerism, we talked about any of these other pieces. You gotta. People are busy and we gotta find a way to engage them where they're at.
Yes. You know, it's, it's funny, you're, you're right, if it's a controversial issue. And people are already upset either about that issue or maybe about something else, but, you know, they, they, they may. Be motivated to get involved, but. There's so many good things that happen that pass by and, you, you know, most of us aren't even aware of them, we, we had a facilities meeting today and. Uh, you know, Sandra pointed out that the, uh, the bleachers in the Pratt are now working the way they're supposed to, and that's. You know, it may be a small thing, but for people who go to those games all the time, who love to watch games at the Pratt. They should know, you know, so how can we let them know and, you know, create a community of people that, that say, wow, these are, these are nice little improvements, you know, and. You know, and, and how do, how do we, uh, do that, um? You know, I don't think we're ever gonna duplicate the kind of audience that you get when people are, you know. Emotional about something, but it feels like we can do more to, you know, share good news, prepare people to think about. You know, like upcoming needs, we were talking a little bit today about capital improvement plans. And if people hear about something next March that we want them to back or pay for. And it's the first time they've heard of it, that's kind of a lot to ask, but if they've been hearing for several years that. This is where the district is going, they're trying to make these improvements. And now two years later, they get a budget request, you know, it's, it, it, it's. It's different, and so the question is, how just, how do we get the information? Uh, that we want, and, and I think we're making, you know, important strides and just.
Well, and, and you know, you look at communication and you know. We have one communication person who's also doing school board stuff. You know. We could hire ten people and have a full PR team of constantly generating and churning out information, you have one person that's just doing social media and one person that's just doing photography. One person just doing videos, like, you, you. You can always do more with more, but that's where that community and that collaboration comes in. And you know, foster, starting to foster that relationship with different people, that's why I'm starting to try to. Engage students more, it's why I'm starting to work more with staff in the ways that I can, you know, at the beginning of the school year, I reached out to. Um, all staff and I just said, hey, I, I'm here, you have a good news story, you have a good photo, you have a good whatever, send it to me. You got a little video clip, send it to me, you're doing a cool thing in your classroom, you want me to stop by? Give me a little bit of notice, please, but send it to me and I'll try to be there. Because sometimes I am like, hey, I have this thing in ten minutes and it's like, well, I'm, I'm not even in the building. So it's, it's building that, it's can we find students that are interested and can generate content, no, it's. It's, it's constant, and that's why the foundational piece of all this was so important, was creating that foundation and structure. So that some of these other things can actually start to split off and generate and actually work and be sustainable, and even if they're not. Sustainable long-term because you might have one student that's really interested. And then they graduate and then you lose them and you don't have them. Um, you at least have the infrastructure to keep picking it up, finding a different way to do it. So, uh, there, there's never gonna be a perfect world, there's always gonna be a thing that we're not doing as well as we could, there's always an area that we can grow, there's always a thing that we can do better. And that's why the surveys are important, that's why engaging people is important, that's why continuing to look at what we're doing is important. Um, that's why I think the next steps are really important, you know, again, looking at website improvements. We have good websites, they're so much better than it was two years ago, how do we keep making them better? Um, you know, one of the things that we're gonna work to do eventually is we're gonna credential. Some staff members in when we have the infrastructure so that. The counseling department at the middle high school, they can start working on their own pages, they don't feel like they have to sit down with me, have a meeting, engage with me. We can train somebody there and they can add some pieces of information in there when they see fit, and then it comes to me and I'm just approving it, so I'm becoming more of a, um. Supervisor, a quality control, something like that, rather than having to be the person that's engaging everybody to grab content, develop and create.
That's great, yeah.
And then, you know, that. I would just want to say as a retired manager. Right, what you're talking about doing is very sophisticated. I mean, trying to include people like that and perform that coordination, that approval role. That, that takes a lot of subtlety and skill and I congratulate you on.
Well, we have it working in small scales, you know, you look at our school district calendar. The, a big ask in twenty nineteen was we need a one-stop shop calendar where all of our information's there. We created the infrastructure on the website where everything's color coded, it appropriately pulls into each website. As it needs to, but it's all run through Google Calendars, which is a familiar platform for most people, we don't have a big training process that we have to do. You have a secretary or somebody at each school that runs that, I honestly monitor it, I could say, hey, we really need to ramp up here, this isn't working. Um, but we now have a functioning thing that we created the infrastructure for, but now it's. Self-sustaining because it's just a, it's a small thing for the secretaries that are day in, day out, dealing with these events and these things and more directly. Working with the principals to build that than it is for me to find it, seek it out. I spoke about Alma a little bit, um, and that that's helping feed one side of the data. Um, another future project that I'm not necessarily involved in, but I'm. Working to push and facilitate is, um, a staff system of record. So that we have that same level of data for the staff side, that's gonna help us credential in people, that's gonna help get our, um, live directory back. Where it's going to have photos, it can be searchable, it's gonna automatic, because School Messenger is our website and School Messenger is our communication platform, it's gonna automatically feed. The right people into the right websites. Um, we can add in links and other information, we can make it super searchable. Or at least that's the goal and intent where if you're at the high school level and you just want to find, uh, science teachers, you type in the word science and it can pull up just science teachers. Again, surveying, working on the goals, working on how we can change and innovate, we want to do more work with learners, we want to do more work with community partners. Um, we've had a couple of posts recently that have performed really well and the thing that made it perform really well is that we had Franklin Pierce involved, we had. At, you know, JGS and RMS, just some football players showed up on a Friday and gave kids high fives while they walked in the building. It, it's not a huge, big whatever, but it made their day and it's making a lot of other people be like, wow, this is cool, there were people posting and commenting saying. It's amazing that our schools are doing this and forging these partnerships. How do we continue to push those forward? How do we look at our relationships with the towns to say? How can we maybe work together to help better promote things that are going on with each other, you know, you guys are doing programming that. Applies to our learners, how do we help you and then how do you in turn help us? Again, just all the streamlining, um, I do have a whole slide, I know I'm going really long and I'm sorry, um. But when it comes to streamlining, um, we've been using School Messenger for a while. It's going to be the thing for us. And it's already working to be the thing for us, but it's gonna become more and more and more important.
I would love to learn more about that. I'd love to learn more about that, but there's one thing that you've mentioned here that I, I know I've been thinking about it and. You know, it has to do with, you know, your time being split between two different positions essentially. And. You know, when, when we face that in the facilities department, we set up expanding. The amount of staffing at facilities and looking back. It was a really important thing to do. We were, we were looking at, you know, millions of dollars of, of needed improvements and repairs. And to have gone forward and have just one person trying to be the supervisor of the maintenance supervisor of. Custodians and also plan all of these projects and oversee them. You know, it, it didn't, it wasn't, it was. Penny wise and pound foolish, you know, because we were spending so much. So getting the help of Trey Horn, who, you know, worked with our facilities director allowed us. To do a lot more. And I, and I wonder if communications is important enough that we need to ask ourselves the same question. How do we maximize? You know, your ability to work on all of these things.
Well, I'm happy to offer input as people want with that, you know, down the line or whatever. It doesn't have to happen right now, um. You know, looking at, when I came in, it was two positions, like it, when I was looking at the job, I really wanted the communications piece. But, um. On a personal note, I couldn't only work twenty hours a week. I needed a full-time job. And so I asked the question, you know, these two positions have a lot of overlap in certain ways. Can we mix them together? I still think there's a lot of value, you know, I am. I come here every single board meeting in both roles, working them at the same time. There is a lot of overlap. There is a lot of stuff, you know, I'd love to split myself into three people and be able to do different stuff at different times, um. Yeah, that's, that's ultimately a, a board and a budget, you know, whatever thing and that's.
Well, it, it has been a while, but thank, you know, we can talk about this and I know there's a lot more to. Anybody have any thoughts or questions for?
Are you saying one regard? Could I just have like three minutes on this last slide? So when I came here, um, School Messenger was pretty much just all calls. You know, when you hear of RoboCall, you hear of VolCall, that's School Messenger. It's a platform that they have called Presence. Even when I first got here, it could do way more than we were using it for. They put a lot of time, money, effort into making it an even bigger tool than it even was before. When I got here, we went through the process of looking at different website companies. School Messenger came up. We chose School Messenger as the website company because of that integration was a big piece. Um, we had talked about wanting a mobile app. School Messenger offered a little custom mobile app. It's not anything crazy or special. Um, but it does offer people another way of accessing information, even if you're just clicking a little spot that brings you somewhere. We are actively working right now of, in terms of expanding that presence piece. To include. To, to essentially become the comprehensive tool for administrators, department heads, superintendent to communicate out to the public. It's, they've created an infrastructure now in which Ruben could go in there theoretically. I'm working on building it out with them right now. But he can write, he can write a message that would. Do a robot voice for an all-call. Would create an email, can create a text message, can send it to the website. They're working on being able to get it sent to Facebook. So rather than Ruben and I having to work collaboratively to get it in all these different places, he can build out one message in one spot. And he can send it out. With getting our data correct, we have more ability to, um, select more specific groups. If we get it to work how it is intended to work and how I want it to work. If David Dustin has a message for seniors, you know, we're heading into graduation season. He can set up his messaging in a way in which it's only sent to the seniors, their families. The teachers that are involved in that bracket. You know, we're, we won't have to send out like a very generic. This is for seniors, so read it if you're a senior, but if not, you don't have to worry about it. Like we'll have that ability to say this goes to these people. Um, we're also actively working on, um. Utilizing a new program, uh, called School Messenger Chat. Actually got the, the email to talk about setting it up, uh, today. This is going to take Remind, any of the sports communication apps. Any, any way that your teacher is trying to have an, an informal, non-email conversation with you and it's going to bring it into one app. And it's, we're going to standardize it throughout the district. So that it's not like, oh crap, this year I had to get Remind because that's what. You know, this teacher uses and next year this teacher uses this thing. And before you know it, you have seventeen apps on your phone. You don't know which one you're using for which thing. You have three different kids and each of their kid. Their teacher uses a different app or you get to the high school and they have four or five different teachers and they're all using different things. We're working to pu- to standardize all that through School Messenger so that. It will be one service. It's going to be linked in through the, um. Portal that we had sent out to have everybody log into, um, to create and set their communication preferences. That allows people to say, I only want text messages. Stop calling me. I don't want the call. I want the text message or. You know, I want emails. We can build out infrastructure where for a, for an emergency, I want a phone call. If it's a generic message, I just want the email. Here's a situation where I want something else. So it's just, it's creating that ability for families, staff, so on to. Say, this is how I want my digital communication to come to me. We do have a few hiccups. We are working on them. I do want to just say it real quickly, just because I'm in a recorded meeting. I want it to be out there. Um, I am working on revising the instructions. We did send out instructions that had an error. Um, somebody transposed a larger forty, fifty page instructions into something smaller. And there was an error where that was pulled together. Um, we gave out incorrect infra- instructions on how people can log in. Um, so there are people having issues with that. We are working on those hiccups to try to get them resolved and I will be sending out more messaging to say, hey, here's the fixes, here's the thing. And then also I'm just formally taking on all School Messenger stuff for the school. So that instead of having to reach out to this person for this and that person for that, everybody comes to me. I can be familiar. I can be the person that just helps, so. Thank you. I definitely went over three minutes. I know I ramble and I. Keep going and going and I could go all night if you wanted me to. Um, but yeah, we're, we're doing a lot of stuff. It's not just me. There's a lot of people working with me. Um, the schools are doing a great job. The community is doing a good job. The perception on Facebook, when I first came in here. There was a lot of negative information going out on Facebook and people would be like, yeah, that's true. And it's like, no, it's not. It's, it's not true. And then you'd have those rumors start and then there's. Perception, um, that becomes reality. So there's a lot less of that. There's more people willing to come in and step up and say, hey, like. Did you actually verify that with the school or the district or the person that's doing it? Oh, no, you didn't? Okay, I did. And here's the actual answer. So. Everybody's got their role. Everybody's, you know. Just got to work together and we can all do our best and we can just keep moving forward.
Will sports coaches also be able to get onto the?
I'm working on that. It's gonna. I've been told that there is a way to do it. I am not as familiar with the way that we're setting up our data and like Alma and things like that, to be able to for sure say that the way it's set up right now. We will be able to do it, but the idea behind chat is that I'm a teacher. I have. I'm an elementary's teacher. I have fifteen kids in my class. It's set up in a way through our data where I'm locked in and I can only reach out to those people that I'm associated with. So I can't just create a random group.
I've got it.
But I think that we're trying to work on ways in which it will apply for sports and even, uh, after-school clubs. So that if there's, hey, I'm sick today. I can't run my club. Or, oh, hey, um, work's being done in my room. We have to move it here. We can just have that push notification out to people and they can have that. So.
Thank you for speaking. This is amazing. On the communication committee briefly. Twenty twenty-one and the difference that I have seen in communication over the years. It's phenomenal and I have the same thought process about the comments that are coming in through Facebook tend to be. Positive or someone actually taking the initiative and saying, you know, this is the, you know, this is who you want to contact for that question or. For that answer. And I see. I, my perception is that the communication is grown by leaps and bounds and. Thank you for all of your hard work and for this presentation.
Yeah, that was a lot. Um, if anybody ever wants to have a conversation with me, if you have follow-up questions or whatever. Then that's not just for the school board. That's anybody listening to this, anybody who will listen to this. It's j.handy@saufortyseven.org. Send me an email. We'll set up a meeting. I'll answer an email question like that's. To me, that's the most basic foundational piece of communication is just being willing to. Have the discussion, so.
Thank you.
It is staggering the difference between two thousand nineteen and now.
So as somebody who was on the very original communication committee.
Oh, fun for, yeah, good time. Get snacks once in a while.
We, we have worked very hard to go from where we were. To where we are now and how to keep going. There's been a lot of hard work on all parties involved.
Another practical example of having equipment that can break down into smaller components.
On the spot right there.
And I would say that I, I can be sort of a. Cynical person and sometimes when people talk about branding and I, I. Get a little upset and I think, ah, you know, why does this, why is everything branding? But yet I see this when I'm out and about and I see it from my kids, you know, they recognize the mascots, they. Are proud, you know, JGS kids are so proud of the owl and on the carpeting and. So despite my grumpiness about it, I, I see that it's working. E- exactly the way it's supposed to be working and, and the mascots are friendly. They, they evolve and they're friendly and. I see pride in that and that's pretty cool.
And I, I think part of the students' pride is that the students. Were part of choosing. The students were just as much involved as administrators were when it came to picking the logo. Although a decent amount of the JGS students preferred the owl with his eyes going opposite directions. They, they came together and chose one with both eyes looking forward.
One of the great thing about our logos now is when I came here, a lot of our logos, we didn't have the original format or file. Like we have, we still have this image of like, I, I think it's the seventies or eighties era Conan Orioles logo. But it's been copied and copied and copied and copied so many times that the best resolution that we have of it is like fourteen kilobytes. So it shows up about this big on a screen. If you stretch it any bigger, it's already like. Somebody scanned it off a paper and then they like. Screenshotted it. So the resolution is so bad that like. And even with the, the old Conan Orioles logo, um, we didn't have the original for that. It's been interesting learning some of the history, like with the JGS Owls, their colors are, were actually pulled. Because the blue came from the middle school and the orange came from the high school, which was interesting when we, um. Merged the middle high school originally and we were doing, uh, orange and blue there and we had the double orange and blue for a while because they both did the same thing. Um, so it's just. It's fun. It's interesting. It's. There's a lot of interesting color theory and whatever, so.
Okay. So moving on and, um. We have. Policy. We've got two new policies or two policy revisions that are here for our first reading. And, uh, would you like to pop those up on the screen for us, Jim?
I can speak to these a little bit if you'd like.
Yes, that would be.
So. What do you have, what do you have up there right now? KCD. Yes, okay. KCD. So I'm not actually sure how exactly how this goes, Lisa's the master of policies, but, um, so first reading. Everybody did, kind of talk about it and you go and read it, right? It's not like I have to read this to you. So, um, this is just a policy on gifts and donations and what happened was we, it was brought to our attention that. With the old policy that we had that. Any gifts exchanged was against policy, like teachers were just like. If this student buys you a Duncan's gift card, uh-uh, like. It was so strange, like there was just this whole thing where you cannot, you can't be exchanging any gifts of any kind. So we obviously went through and kind of talked about it and looked at it. And compared to others and kind of came up with some great ideas. So when you look this over, that's, those are kind of the changes you're going to see. With making sure that. However, things are given, there's, there's value to things. I, because I think one of our big conversation was. Because even as a parent, I was always given a list, would come home with the kids from grade school that said. You know, we could really use tissues. And I guess we're not allowed to give them, so they were not allowed to receive them. So we had to figure that out and make it more broad so that they could actually somehow get these things. As I guess it came down to like favoritism or something. Somebody was getting an abundance of things and somebody was getting none. So we had to kind of fix that. So that's what we did here, fixing all of that. So, um, that's the.
Good.
The history of this one.
Yeah.
So we'll go over that and then we'll do a second reading at some point.
Interesting enough, on that twenty, that last paragraph here there, that talks about twenty thousand dollars. The board needs to have a public hearing that receives anything.
Yeah.
Above that.
Yeah.
I didn't put it in my super block. I had it written down. I was, I was going for a while, my superintendent. Uh, Sandy, and I had gone to a second visit to, um. Uh, that furniture.
Oh, yeah.
Like I said, I had talked about the, the warehouse, basically they had all that furniture. And so, um, hopefully this week a little here back again from an effort when and sort of to select more of what we were. Hoping for anyway from this experience. Again, it's possible that a donation will be made. A donation will be made, most likely. I'm, I'm about ninety percent certain of that. How large the donation, that's what we need to find out and we still have to give them some more information on a few of the items. But it could end up being certainly. Then twenty thousand dollars, so we would have to have a public hearing. For that. If, if that, you know, so hopefully by the next time we have a board meeting, we'll have more information about that. But we were able to go for a second trip.
Excellent.
Yeah, I thought, uh, I like the policy as written and just had one question. Doesn't matter so much, but it's just kind of appeared to be like kind of something strange, that value of. Gifts between. One hundred and in excess of a hundred, but up to five hundred and one dollars. Why five hundred and one? So that would be like, I don't know, it, it would seem to be either. Four ninety-nine or five hundred might make sense, but up to five hundred and one dollars seems like an. Doesn't matter so much, but. It's kind of an odd number. That would be anything like five hundred and two to twenty thousand would be approached by the board. It's just kind of a.
Is that just a typo? Is it supposed to be up to five hundred dollars? And then anything above five hundred and one.
That's, that's what I would expect.
Yeah. So let me.
Gifts, gifts of a value in excess of one hundred, but up to, I don't know, either. Well, I don't know what the intent is, either up to four ninety-nine or up to five hundred.
Oops, oh yeah.
I don't know what the intent there.
Yeah, um, based on the original policy that we had, the issue was. The issue and the reason why donations became tricky is because there was no threshold. So theoretically, if I donated anything to the school district, it would require the approval, so.
It would seem to be.
It's a weird number.
It doesn't make sense that we would be, we're going to forget what that number is.
I, I get it. I don't know.
Back to the.
I will take that back.
Committee and again, I'd prove it either way, but.
I think it's just an edit because if you look into the next paragraph.
I think it's just an edit because if you look into the next paragraph, it says gifts between five hundred.
No, it's, oh yeah, yeah, it's, so it's, it's an edit on the first paragraph.
First one, yeah.
Yeah, between five hundred and one, so. That's all.
Okay.
Very good, thanks for pointing that out. And uh. This is the first reading, so we'll bring it back for a second.
Yeah, I think, and otherwise I think it's. It communicates a good intent and is well written, so.
So so let's move on to D J H.
Yep, D J H is, this is a brand new policy, I believe we did not have this. Um, and there was felt that there was a need for this though, and some schools have it and most don't. So basically just looking over this about food beverages, catering and any kind of venue rental. Basically spending. Um, for um, the reason of if it's not for learner, learning learner education. So um. Sorry, I didn't have the right one in my hand. Um, but basically read this one over, making sure that it's. Decent, the thing that I wanted to make sure we talked about, kind of to tell you these bullets, if you go down to the bullets. Making sure, because we were all kind of like, ah, but. They're examples, not to be limited to, you know what I mean? So and I it does say that at the bottom, it says, you know, the above examples do not can um, cover every instance of intended use. But that's where people get stuck, they see that, oh, I can't use it on this, but I can use it on that, but it's giving examples. So that we didn't have to name every single thing, so just keeping that in mind, that, you know. The way that has to be written. Making sure that, and then we also did talk about, oh, good, I just remembered this, um. We weren't sure, so in the bottom, it says the following are examples of unintended uses for food. We were talking about, is that negative and how do you flip that wording? So that it's not negative, but none of us could come up with anything, so. I'm not sure if that's okay, or if there's a way to flip it to a positive note rather than a negative note. So that was one thing we had talked about, we couldn't come up with anything, so we were like, you know what, unintended is fine. So if you guys can come up with something. Thoughts are welcome. But if not.
I don't think unintended is too harsh, you know?
Yeah. Right.
Um, it's a fine word.
Yeah, I think it fits because. It's not intended to be used at regular staff meetings or. Birthday parties that I think unintended fits.
I do too, and I think overall the policy is well written and gives the, as we talked about in a previous meeting, establishes the budget and. And it leaves that to the discretion of the responsible administrators and gives us oversight in that way, so.
Perfect, excellent, and then we did like. Made sure, I think it was this one, we made sure it says um. Directors as well.
Yes.
Yeah, so that was important to us to make sure that, you know, we were like, these are the people plus directors, so they're not constantly coming to one person. Anyway, alright, that is it.
Thank you, Kim.
You're welcome.
Board committee updates. So I think we'd just like to leave this to, if you've had a meeting or the committee has done something. Like there was an update on policy.
Policy just not yet, that's what we just went over and then I was not able to make education, so maybe Daisy can.
Um, I was not able to make it either.
Oh yay, somebody made it.
I sent, I sent out an email today to the education committee, we did end up canceling because it was just myself, Jen Horn and Charlie. And um. There wasn't a whole lot of value in meeting with that small of a group. Jen Horn did say that the student services presentation that she was going to present would still be equally relevant, you know, three months out. Um, and so that she'd be happy to come back with that same presentation. The only difference would be that maybe she could have some additional pieces of information to add to it, so.
Okay.
Um, she's happy to still do that presentation, just wasn't a lot of value in such a small. Group.
Understood, thank you.
Yes. Well. Longest hasn't mentioned since our last meeting, however, the walk to school is coming up, is that this week?
I guess it is, I really have not seen.
It's tomorrow.
Tomorrow. It's tomorrow.
Oh, Wednesday, Wednesday.
Wednesday.
Haven't seen much about it.
I knew that. Been a long, it's been a long Monday.
Yes, on Monday.
It's this week.
Yes, well.
There's also a concert at the middle high school this week on Thursday.
Open house tomorrow.
Tomorrow night.
That's what's tomorrow.
Open up tomorrow, five thirty, yeah. Here.
Not, not to get off track, but uh, I'd noticed in the invitation to the open house, it said there's gonna be like. Information for parents, is there anything kind of like district related that's gonna be there or? As far as, I don't, I don't even know if there was any sort of, said there were gonna be like information tables or mostly just. School related or you may not know. It's probably up to.
Well, my, yeah, so I don't have exact answers from you, I mean, I'll certainly be going, um, but. It is possible that there will be uh, some information or some small. Uh, conversations, not something overwhelming on the concept of bullying, cyberbullying.
Okay.
Um, since that, since I'm following the Facebook page on Jeffrey about a situation, um. You know, that's a parent decided it was appropriate to. Put online about a um, a child, that's unfortunate, um, without much information, but uh, hopefully, hopefully it's been taken down, we'll see. Um, I'll follow up on that later, but the. I would say that, you know, from a standpoint, I mean, it's always been an issue, we had the committees that worked on that sort of thing, worked on policy and so forth. We need to find, trying to get more. I would say. Training for families, community, so that they understand what it is. Um, certainly, uh, when it reaches the secondary level, um, I mean, we're on top of it, we're investigating. I get a lot of the investigations, I see everything that comes through. Um, but when these items are being used and, you know, inappropriately or. Um, that's off hours of the evening, morning. We have to follow up on these things. And so uh, cyberbullying and what does that mean, I think, um. And also to a parent, how can they help, you know, in in a couple of different ways. At some point in time, we want to probably have some conversations about, one, please, you know. Talk to your children about using a device. Secondly, when a school district has concrete evidence. That something's taking place and a child is involved. Please support your child by letting them. Let, but letting the message be, you made a mistake, you have consequences. We need to learn from them, I still love you, but you're gonna be held responsible, rather than saying things of, you know. Well, my, my child said that he or she did not do that. I know you have evidence, but I believe my child, that sort of thing, you know, that makes it very difficult to help that child grow. I mean, the consequence will still take place because, you know, we have the preponderance of evidence, but it ceases to have the impact. That it could have, and certainly it's a lasting effect for that child and for other people that are involved in that process.
No, and again, we're running long here, I'm just kind of.
Yeah.
Interesting, like anecdotally, of of those sort of types of incidents, bullying type things, how much would you say is? Of the, you know, cyberbullying, online nature.
Once it comes to this, this, once it comes to the secondary um, level, because that's been more.
Yep.
Will happen. Um, it's, it's gotta be above seventy five percent.
That's what I would assume.
Much higher, yeah, maybe. Yeah, higher.
Yeah, certainly, I think educating, educating parents on. Policy and expectations on both sides.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
And um. That's new to. Certainly as parents, right? Most, most parents.
Yeah.
Guess I'm a bit of an old parent, but. No, I think that's a worthwhile topic.
Interestingly. There's um, using. I don't, I don't know if this is appropriate use, but frequently coaches have had. Communication through Snapchat, or at least they, the coach. Might communicate to the team captain and then the captain spreads the information through Snapchat. I've heard any number of parents of sixth grade students say. Oh, Snapchat, I hate Snapchat, but my kid plays a sport and they need it to find out if the bus has been canceled. Are you positive it's Snapchat and not Team Snap?
Cause I got them confused.
Okay. Okay. But it, that's like the team captain communicating with the team and it's not. I know it's not supposed to happen, but this.
That's why I asked about messenger and the coaches.
Such a difference.
That's, that's part of the goal behind school messenger chat is that eventually we can get to a level where it takes. Sports communication and things like that, because one thing I forgot to mention that's also really nice about school messenger is with a lot of these third party bits of information. There's a lot of he said, she said, and investigation may have to be placed, you know, take place. If you're not given information, you might have to get, you know, like a subpoena or something to be able to get that data or information. Um, through the school messenger system, we're told that there's some level of accountability and ability for us to say there was something that we needed to look at, we could. Because it's something that we're paying for, they're providing us a service, we'd have more ability to look through that. And then you'd also get. Out of some of those like Snapchat situations, like some teachers have asked me throughout the years if they can start an Instagram page to speak to. You know, students and families and like some of those, you're kind of.
Yeah.
Getting away from the purpose and you, you, you run into more situations where there could be problems and it's. It's informal but too informal. Um, Snapchat, a lot of things get deleted, there's not really a good like storage of things, so like. Pu- pulling out of the.
Yes, absolutely. But anyway, facilities met today. It was a fantastic meeting, they are getting so much done, it's crazy. Each back is very close to being completed. The J G S amphitheater is very close to getting put in place. It was that new low tax that was installed at RMS, that's that, like not carpeting, but it looks like carpeting flooring. That's in the entrance here, um, and at J G S, easy to clean, clean with water. She's not using toxic chemicals. And oh my gosh, what else?
We're gonna be putting in an additional sixteen feet onto the chimney stack for the um. Boiler. Bio chips boiler, and the reason for that is that uh, there is some concern, there's, it, there's been a concern in the past about. In the right weather conditions where you have smoke blowing down, then it could enter. The intake for one of the rooftop units, now we've increased the number of rooftop units that could be affected in those. Circumstances, so the recommendation's been. Made that we extend that chimney, and so that's in the works.
Yeah, you know, it's saying, I smell smoke.
Yeah.
Yeah, right. As Christine said, a lot of progress is being made, there's still a bunch of lists to be worked on, but uh. And as Ruben pointed out today, when we arrived here, it was cool and here today, so we're gonna be working on those issues and. This is our year to really try to get input from. Classroom teachers and. And others, because we can make adjustments, it's be a lot easier now.
Yeah.
Than it will be two years from. Uh, but there's a lot more going on, one thing I think we talked a little bit about Gale. Uh, the Gale company is doing some assessment work for us, we have a small contract with them, fifty thousand dollars. And I say small only because there's such a large number of facilities to look at. We've got the RMS uh, facility with its playing fields and reach fields, we've got our lower field. And our. Track and tennis courts area and. The J G S site, same thing, apart from that, so there's a lot of different, and the RAP two O two site, of course, so. Yeah, it was head of, uh, that has been, started their work and we discussed a little bit trying to, you know, make sure that they're. Focusing their, their efforts, you know, on the parts that are most important or timely for us. What else, uh? Yeah, it was, it, it was a good meeting, a lot of work is being done. Um, Sandra and uh, Trey, and their, their staff, the other people that work with them are doing a lot. And we talked a little bit about the age old idea of how do we make sure that people in the community know what we're doing, that we're. Not sitting on our hands or just taking their money and spending it without thought, that a lot of. Good is being done, facilities are getting better, the air filtration system and the. Uh, construction trades area is almost finished. So I mean, these improvements are. Of these, someone mentioned to me, well, you know, that. Construction trades, it's, it's been like that for, you know, twenty five years, why you have to fix it now, school security. In the past, the door of garage door was wide open, that was the way to introduce more air into the facility. But we know that if you've got a garage door wide open, that what's the point of having? You know, security system and doors that lock, so. Communications with our. Community. Uh, did finest meet since our last meeting?
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Alright, very good. I think we're ready for public comments, so our second session of public comments.
Alright, um. Think these are all usual people, but um, oh, I already got one hand raised. Um, but yeah, if you're remote and you want to make a public comment, uh, use the hand raise feature at the bottom of your screen. And um, I will give you the ability to speak, first name, last name and town of residence, um. First up, we have Allison Mar.
Hi, Allison Mar from Wrenching, Hampshire, I just wanted to comment on what you were mentioning about facilities. Leland has worked incredibly hard the last week and a half to fix some issues we had at RMS. And I just want to say how much we appreciate it, he's done a fabulous job.
Oh, thank you for that. Yeah, thank you, Allison, that's good to know, we were very impressed by Leland today, he answered all of our questions and. You know, politely but also very professionally.
Yes, and in depth.
And, right. So yes, thank you, Allison.
Alright, anybody else?
And uh. We did agree that we're going for a second non-public.
Non-meeting.
Non-meeting.
Non-meeting, sorry. Right. Currentology correct, yeah. Alright, so uh. Board matters, are there any board matters that anyone would like to move forward? No, so then, um. Do we end our public meeting and then go into another? Okay.
I'll make a motion to. Or me, a second.
Okay, thank you, Kim, and thank you, Daisy. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye, aye.
Opposed, none, so. Okay.